Alright, I'd like to call this meeting of the Berlin Boylson Regional School District Superintendent Subcommittee to order. And it is ten seventeen. Okay, the first thing that we're gonna look at is we're gonna review past surveys. So what I did is I compare, I had Google compare the two. So anything that's red is, I believe, the old one, let me see. Yes, so it's the old one. So what we did is in the new one, Susan and I went through and like we, at the end of the old one, they had, please provide your name. And we were like, you really should do it in the beginning so that you know that they're asking you that, you know, your name is gonna be on it. Even though no one's really gonna see it except for the, the evaluation committee. Um, but we moved that to the front, so that's in red. Um, and then, I think these are like margin changes and transitional and like thank you for completing all these. It was all just regular, like anything that's in, that's in pink was changed.
So it's new.
So it's new. So yeah, so I think they put all this at the beginning so that we could see it. And then they have the, the, the numbers of different ones. So like, this is now, this was originally number one, but because we put please provide your name as number one, it shows number two as a change, but it's just the number. The rest of it's all the same. So it was just the same question. And then see like two is three, so this one, so some of them are the same. Like they're all, you know, they all just have the same thing. But then when we get down, five, six, there's some that are seven. Yes, he replaced seven with eight, so I can just look on the side there actually. Replace nine with ten. Cause I just named it edits. So what it did is it went through and changed it. Down here, there's some really big ones. Okay, so this one. Is twelve with thirteen. Delete table, delete. So I think we got. Hello? That's my junk mail. I think we may have gotten rid of this. So I'm just gonna put down, although it says it changed twelve to thirteen. Delete table, delete paragraph. So it looks like it got rid of these. But doesn't it look like it deleted it?
No, I think that's just like the space, uh, the spacing is new. Cause it didn't strike out.
Yeah, and that still says thirteen. Does it say fourteen? Yeah, so that's right. So it didn't change anything. It was just the, yeah, I think it was the, um, I think it was the way it was set up. So then what it looks like it did is it, we added, geez, everything's going on my computer. We added this one. This one is new. So meeting subcommittees. The committee uses subcommittees or task groups to streamline its work in advance of the goals. Oh no, it looks like we took that out.
No, it would've striked, struck, striked it out, struck it out, whatever.
Yeah, we added it. You're right. Cause that's a strikeout.
Yeah, cause red is new text.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause see here, down here, replace thirteen with fourteen.
Yeah.
Blah, 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 blah. So that's okay. Well, I think that's a good one.
I, yeah, I think it's a really good one, especially when we do so much subcommittee work. So goal setting, it's interesting, there was just a sentence that was added in. The super, this committee does not work with the superintendent in the community to establish long range educational goals and strategy for the district. Because underdeveloped just simply started with there was a mission statement in place. But when you're talking about your work, if you do all this for embedded and sustainable, yeah, the opposite would be true. So that was changed.
And this was all M S A C, right?
This is all, yes, this is all from M A S C. So it looks like we got rid of the annual goals. Um, it just, it just reworded. Annual goals for the district. Um, are established. The school committee ensures alignment of goals and school improvement plans, superintendent goals and school committee goals.
But it looks like.
Yeah, they moved it down. Oh, interesting.
Slightly different, but it's still annual goals.
So that's what I think we did. We, instead of, I think, oh, we got rid of annual goals, put it down here and then named this equity. Um, the committee attends, attend, cause we, I think that's what it was. I think we just, we combined, we thought that these two were very similar, so we combined them and then made a new one for equity.
Yeah, so having it on the agenda is important.
Yes.
Frequent agenda items, so.
So this, so this is, the black and the purple are what we currently have.
So you combined the sixteen and seven.
Yeah, so those are, yeah, so that, so we added this in. So it was originally just the black and then we added in the purple is what we added in. So that's our current, the whole thing is what our current was. And then it looks like they took out annual goals may or may not be in place. And we changed it to the school committee does not have a regular process for establishing annual goals. The school committee does not consider goal alignment across plans and goals.
Now, I know, um, Carol has goals. Do we? Cause that's saying it's our, or, oh, I guess annuals for the district.
Yes, but normally, um, yeah, establishing annual goals for the district. So we could, we could be looking at the district improvement plan, but we, we do goals ourselves. And we just didn't do it this year because we're so, there's so many, working on so many different pieces with a new superintendent that we didn't, we didn't do, there's just so many moving parts that we didn't do it. So we're probably gonna get a low rating on this, which means next year it's gonna become a priority. Because, um, unless we decide to do goals. Um, but we're kinda halfway through the year.
I mean, well, there is the three-year plan, which we're in year two of, right?
Right.
Hypothetically, that's somewhat applicable, cause it said.
Is this where we were?
Thought I saw it, yeah.
Oh, no, wait. Here it is.
Yeah, school improvement plan. Superintendent's goals and school committee goals. So it's two out of three.
Yeah. I think there's a song, two out of three is bad. I feel like three out of three would be better though. Um, let me just see, so that's.
Do we have like past goals?
We do.
Like historicals?
Yes. Do you want me to send you those?
Yeah, just to see what they were. Cause it's something to, you know, think about for future.
Absolutely.
You know, future years.
So let's go over here. So now we have goal setting and monitoring. Student achievement and district progress is monitored regularly through the use of data that adequately measures progress. To its goals that have been set.
So that's like aims one.
Yeah. But I figured it's, it's in here. Yes, so they, should we change it to district leaders regularly share clear analysis of student achievement and district progress through the effective use of data displays reports. Because I think that the way it was worded, the, the problems that Susan and I had with the original one was the way they were worded, it was giving us responsibility for things we didn't have, but we, we, we reworded it to show like they're the ones that will bring it to us and we're gonna call it. We're gonna make sure that we use that.
That they come and.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so measuring progress towards stated goals, presentation, so disaggregated data with, data with attention to equity and outcomes. And then, yeah, we get, M C A S scores are presented. We, school committee discussions and decisions are rarely based in district, are rarely based in district data and trends over time. District leaders present student achievements scores. I don't know that that's. Oh, oh, it's, it's underdeveloped. Yes, that's why. I was like, why would we say that? Yeah. And then this one, budget. Budget is aligned to district goals and consideration is given to best, align resources to accomplish goals. School committee considers both district goals and free responsibilities when doing budget recommendations. We changed it to school committee considers both district goals and fiscal responsibilities. Oh yeah, when considering budget recommendations. So we added in fiscal responsibilities. The committee ensures budget is aligned to district goals and considers how best to align resources to accomplish the goals. So we added in the, the piece about being fiscally responsible.
Ah, so instead of aligning, it's considering.
Because I think, I think in the past we didn't, I also think in the past we didn't decide, we had less, we did less input as far as how it was gonna be aligned. It was more presented to us and we were like, oh, you're gonna have to put that money there, there. And then we realized, well, we really actually have a voice in this. Um, and we should be considering that. Yeah, when, when I go through, I'm gonna go through, so number nineteen.
Under, underdeveloped.
Yeah, and that's under, underdeveloped. So that's nineteen. So twenty. Instead of there is a transparent, the school committee ensures there is a transparent process. Because we were trying to make it purposeful to us. Cause otherwise, just a, a, I, having a transparent process didn't really make it about us. Budget. There's a regular monitoring and oversight. The school committee regularly monitors and oversees. We just turned it into action. The school committee does not ensure a regular review of budget reports after the budget is approved.
Like Nancy's report?
Yes, yep. That's exactly what that would be. Um, same thing here. There is, the school committee has an established process. Cause we were trying to make it our, if it's, if we're evaluating ourselves, it has to be in action about us. Whereas some of them, people were just either non-answering or, um, I don't know if they weren't answering them or.
Didn't know how to.
Yeah, didn't know how to. Let's see, down here. So it looks like, oh, budget equity. It looks like what they did is we took this budget, the equity part. The committee assumes deployed equity across the district and all students, and we put it up here.
The sixteen, I think.
Yeah, let's go back. Good memory.
Don't ask me to remember other things.
That is really good. Committee ensures leadership presentations. Last question, what equity is being, oh, address number sixteen. So let's see if that's what is down here. What is it? See, I wish I could make this bigger. The committee ensures that resources are deployed equitably across the districts so that all students have access to the resources necessary for their success. And that was stated up above.
But then there, I, I feel like there was more added to that sixteen one as well.
There was much more.
Yeah.
It was thicker.
Yeah.
So, are you okay with that, those two going together?
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's see, this one, embedded and sustainable. So policy review. Did we rename this? Number twenty, budget equity with policy review.
Yeah, they just reworded, school committee reviews district policies. And that's the twenty-three.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's review, that's right, okay.
But there's no, we're not.
No.
We're only doing what M C A S is.
Yes.
Advising us, not a, in, like a separate review process, right?
Right. Yeah, or there was like, I was like. Yeah. Yep, that's what we do in response to changes in law or regulation or after consideration of a superintendent recommendation. Where policies in district manual and reference it as needed. Yeah. So this one is review of policy documents. The committee regularly discusses and approves the full range of district policy documents to ensure alignment among them. These include budget, staff and student handbooks, collective bargaining agreement, strategic district improvement plans, contracts, regional agreement, M O U's and grants. See, we added that in because.
It's not just policy.
Yeah, it's more, we do so much more than that. So, um, this was, I mean, Susan was really good at this. This was.
Well, the, the, um, student success and technology. So we're gonna do about just the conferences next meeting, next Friday, but then future agenda is the handbooks. So hopefully touch base with Janelle about that.
Oh, that would be great.
You know, see, but legally has to be in there for policies versus.
Yeah, I know, it's true. And, cause it gets fuzzy. It really does. Best practice, instead of policies, we have school committee ensures policies reflect research on best practice, data and research. A belief that's, uh, all students can learn and where's the three in there? Continuous improvement.
It's a little overlap with the previous one, but.
Yeah, it really is. Oh, so this one is, instead of with equity, it's just simply best practices, data and research, and then all students can learn. So it takes the equity piece out of it and looks at just what's left. Personnel, so that stayed the same, twenty-six.
Evidence was filled in. With evidence, and that's what she's doing.
Oh, right. It's actually real, I'm really excited, um, about, I'm, I'm gonna say excited. I'm really relieved about doing this. Cause it was a huge, I mean, there's a lot of. It was, it was so much investigating. You felt like you were mining. You were like, I'm trying to find information that's not there. And again, like if we had said to, to him, this is, we want you to do it this way, you would've, but. See, the committee understands hiring is authority. So yes, we have the same. Hiring authority for the positions of superintendent, assistant superintendent, business manager, special education director. And then we, basically that we understand that the superintendent.
Does.
Does the rest. Yeah, exactly. It's not our, it's not our purview. Collective bargaining. So that's the same. Here we go, personnel, employee relations. An engaging effort is made to have, and it changed to the school committee fosters open fair communications with collective bargaining units and the superintendent is included in and supported in this effort. Instead of regular communication allows issues to be received collaboratively rather than.
Confrontation.
Yeah, confrontationally. Yeah, right?
That's an interesting word, yeah.
Right? It's hard to see with that big line through it. Committee expects regular updates from the committee chair and superintendent regarding collaborative efforts with collective bargaining units to resolve concerns. The number of grievances is low and the, any productive relationship is evident to parents and the community. So that's good. Is that you?
It's you.
What's me? I'm afraid it was there. Uh, underdeveloped, uh, basically the school committee fosters an us versus them culture between the union and the committee. The committee does not actively support the superintendent in maintaining open and fair communication with the collective bargaining unit. The committee does not receive regular communications from the committee chair and superintendent about addressing concerns. So that's good. Cause see how vague it was before? Because I think what she did is she got rid of the confrontational part, or we did.
Yeah.
And we put the number of grievances is low and a productive relationship is evident to parents and the community.
Does, do, does a collective bargaining, like do they meet regularly?
So it's like whenever we get like an M O U from them, where they wanna amend something in the contract or, um, an email from them. Usually it's, cause usually it's a, it's a concern that they have or some sort of amendment that they wanna make. So it all depends on the year. I mean, every single, oh, every single year we've had, there's always an M O U or something going, you know, going on where you're, you're working with the union. Um, it's just not as predictable.
Did we, did there used to be like a union rep at the meetings?
I don't know.
I don't know. It'd be interesting to like, know like how often they meet, like if it's a once a month thing or, you know.
That's a good question.
Cause like, you know, like an M O U, but clearly there had been an issue brewing before that.
Right. Well, I know like when I was, when I was chair and when, specifically when Phil was chair, cause he came on at a certain point. We would, he'd call me and we would talk things out. And then, and I know he did that with Mike a couple times too. And so sometimes that would alleviate having to even go down a different road if there wasn't already an agreement there or, um, or if it turned out it wasn't our purview or something like that. So yeah, but it's, that's a good question, if we ever had a union rep at our meeting. I don't know. I think because the, the union is supposed to go to Carol. Well, they're supposed to go to their principal, then Carol, then us. So I don't know if they're skipping protocol by just coming to our meeting and.
But in terms of like, I guess, you know, like giving a report, or, oh, maybe not a report. I guess you're right. It would go, it would be through Carol. But I guess even just like listening to the meetings, like a rep, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's a good question.
Let's see, so it's employee relations. Personnel support. Committee approves adequate budgetary resources instead of resources are.
Allocated.
Thank you, I could not, I thought it was selected. Allocated for. Yeah, because that spoke more to what Nancy does versus the committee approves adequate budgetary resources. So our argument the first year we did it was some of this stuff we, we don't do. And it was just the wording.
Yeah, cause we don't allocate it. It's Nancy. And then we say, oh, yes, we agree.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they do that based on, like the budget committee do, does it too, based on where, you know, district improvement and things like that. Let's see. So thirty-one. So open meeting law, that's the same. Gonna fix that meeting. Law and ethics. Diligent about maintaining confidentiality of executive. That's spelled, that's spelled correctly.
Yeah.
I think it just has a problem, cause normally you don't capitalize it. Yeah. Yes, you're right. It's probably, or it wants it to be possessive or something, of an executive's session or something. So this one stayed the same, roles and responsibilities. We understand our roles and responsibilities of individual member. No efforts are made on part of an individual member to influence the actions of the superintendent and or staff, clearly leaving the day-to-day management of the district to be, to the superintendent. So this one, we added in all, so committee members avoid conflicts of interest as appropriate. They seek advice and or file disclosures to ensure they are following laws. All committee members take conflict of interest ethics training every two years as required by law, which is good that we added that in. And Nicole's on that right now, which is good.
I'm wondering if the fuller was called ethics rather than conflict of interest.
Oh.
Ethics training.
You're right. I'm writing that down. I think you're right. Because I feel, yeah, take the conflict of interest. I think you're right. Cause I, I feel like it may have been called like.
Ethics.
Yes, and then it turned into, maybe with a colon, conflict of interest, but it's, it's merged into just conflict of interest, doesn't it better? Cause it's more than just ethics.
Yeah.
We'll have to ask her that after. It's a good call. Law and ethics, respect. Community members treat each other with respect and civility. Members debate the issues, not one another, and focus on the work of the district rather than individual pet projects. I think that's an important one. But so no changes. Community engagement. The committee makes an ongoing effort to provide information to the community about the achievements and challenges of the school district. Communication plan exists to reach stakeholders through multiple, multiple media and policies clarify parameters and approaches for the committee's public communications.
I was, I was thinking that, like, we have a Facebook page and I, I think we should probably use that to like post agendas for upcoming meetings. And then I was thinking like the, the footer to our emails, like maybe, you know, like have a link to the electronic communication policy to explain like why emails might not be as satisfying as one would like as a reply. Or even like a link to our policy.
You mean at the bottom of the agenda or?
No, well, yes, actually. Yeah. Like I think, yes, because if we have like, you know, L M N O P policy, it'd be really nice to have that link, like, you know, see the link at the below for that. But even like our signatures and our emails, I think that might be helpful for people, like this is, like, yeah, like, you know, adhering to the electronic communication policy of the school committee, you know, this is, you know, please see below for a whole policy or, or even just like a link to the policy manual. Cause I think few people know it exists or how to find it, cause our website is still.
Oh, well, yeah, and I, I actually just helped someone from another district who said, how would I find the policy manual? I'm like, let me tell you how to find it. So I sent them to the M A S C, but not everybody, there's only like maybe forty school districts that have used the M A S C. And theirs happen to be there, so it was, it was a good find. Um, but you're right, they wouldn't know where to look for that.
Yeah.
So that's a great idea.
To look, you know, like, there's, it's electronic, you know, searchable.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, I think we really need all of this too on our, um, on the webpage. And maybe agendas in contact. Maybe we can do, pin something to the top of the, um, Facebook page. You know what I mean? So that way when they go there, they would have, like, our agendas would be there, but also our contact information could always be pinned. But if it's, if that's on the agendas, then it's even better. Let's see. Community engagement. We actively seeks community feedback to ensure that the vision and values of the community are reflected in its decision-making. We use that to make our goal. I think it was two thousand twenty-one? Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, when we did, um, we would go to different meetings, like P T O meeting or C P A C. And then we had to abandon that goal because we went down to a committee of five and the chair was just learning, so. But that might be another one that comes up as a, a lower one this year. Um, embedded and sustainable, although.
But we had surveys.
Yeah, we did have surveys, yeah.
Year and so, I just, I don't think we've done it this year.
It's like, I know that we, like the vision and values of the community are reflected in decision-making. Like we do definitely do that with budget. Especially this year where the meeting with the other, having the finance committee come in and the select board and.
I wonder with that, with the budget too, like maybe do like a parent survey too, like within the budget, like where do you feel? Like what area do you feel that should be prioritized?
I'll suggest that to the budget committee, um, parents.
A parent survey. Yeah, I don't know, like it'd have to be multiple choice, but you know, like safety versus transportation versus, I don't know, staffing or, um, I'm sure there's, there's a million different.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Cause it would be, it would be nice to know what they think about the budget. Community engagement building support. The committee actively seeks support and involvement from local stakeholders, including local businesses, nonprofit and service organizations. I think that one was a weakness of ours last time.
Oh, there were quite a few grants there. Right, the B E S assessment that was paid for by business.
Yeah, well, and actually, yes, you're right. And, um, I was just thinking even like service organizations and. Local stakeholders, yeah.
I don't know, like the Fuller Foundation, like.
Yeah, well, I was even thinking like the historical society came in and they were sharing what they had and, um, and they actually got kids from Tonto to do that, which was really nice. Yeah, I love that.
And they have an intern too. It's, uh, an older sister, one of Maggie's friends.
Oh, that's great. I love that. What a great opportunity.
Right.
Community engagement municipal. The community works to build partnerships with municipal officials resulting in collaborative relationships as well as understanding and supportive school needs and issues. That would be like the select board, the pincom. So that'd be even more. I guess that would be, this would be, this is, yeah, these would be, that's outside of, so that's one, this one's about government, that one is stakeholders in the area, businesses, yeah. Um, and then community engagement. Committee communicates with colleagues across the state to stay abreast of trends, emerging issues and policy solutions that impact the district. And then they added in, most committee members attend conferences or topical webinars and follow discussion. And policy solutions that impact the district, and then they added in, most committee members attend conferences or topical webinars and follow discussion on professional listservs. Or read publications during the year and report back to the committee regarding legislative updates, initiatives in other districts and relevant resources.
So I mean, the fact that two of us, well, you know, Carol and then Lisa and I went to the conference. Presented at the next meeting.
Yes, absolutely, that's, that's huge, I was actually thinking as I was going through looking at these that, that was so helpful that you guys did. Because that's one of the things we wanted to be more involved in was MASC.
Yeah, and I think knowing that there's a summer, like a, you know, summer conference. Like two half days, but that was also helpful too, so.
I forgot about the summer conference, is that information out yet?
Via postcard and.
And then we just got rid of the name at the end, yeah, so it bumped everything up to the top. So do you, do you wanna stick with this the way that it is?
I think so, cuz it's, I don't, nothing was cut that shouldn't have been cut, things were combined, but it was like, you know, adequately so.
Well, it's funny cuz in my memory, we had cut things, but then I, then as I was going through looking at it, I was like, oh, no, no, we, we were, we reworded it because they were important, they just. Yeah, exactly, versus now I'm reading, you know, Nancy or Carol, but it's, it's supposed to be our evaluation. So, okay, well, then that's all set, that's good. I couldn't believe how nicely, in the beginning, when I first put it together, it was so hard to read.
It's amazing it does that.
So actually, Mike's the one that told me about it, and then I Googled it, you go up into, I think it's tools. And compare documents, and then you click that, and then it'll ask you what you wanna compare it to, it was amazing.
That's cool.
So now this is like a whole new world for me.
Yeah, for policies especially.
Um, so discuss options for two thousand twenty three, so I think we should submit this one as our self evaluation. Do, are you on, are you on board with that, do you feel the same?
Yeah, no, totally, yeah, cuz I think most of the things that you were writing down is things that we need to do to address those goals.
And you know what I think I, we should probably do is, I'm one, yeah, actually, I think, I, I'm gonna have. As our update, cuz usually we update. Yeah, I think what we'll do is I'll throw the, the right one in the drive and just say. Please review what you're gonna be evaluated on at the end of the year to keep it fresh.
Yes, and that's why I think also just showing the superintendent evaluation, what is also.
Yes.
Good to say, you know, just this document will be coming at you.
Uh, and then superintendent, cuz I cleaned that up, I wanted to show you, I cleaned it into a blank one. Because if I put that in this time and just say, I want you to look at it and, you know, we're gonna discuss how you go about it. Um, I think we do that in January, but I'll, let me just, I'll check our timeline here.
Wonder, is there a way to like. Plug her, like, within this document, like.
Yes.
Plug her goals into the relevant places.
So if you, so, so if you, I brought Megan's old one, right? So, and I wanna know your opinion, in the past, this was highlighted because.
Oh, to, to allow you.
To, well, to, no, to guide you to say you're, he's, the, the superintendent is supposed to get proficient unless. Like see, that would be all gray, unless, um. Like they did really, really well, or, you know, like this is the goal. But to me, I took it out because I felt like once you get into the colors, cuz this is, this is what I'm gonna do with this now. Is I'm gonna go through and take Carol's goals and I'm gonna highlight which one it is, so indicator, you know. V, IVA. Yeah, so like they're in different places, so I'll highlight them, then you, then you say like, it's, you know, standard. Well, I would say goal number three, professional practice goal, and I'd, so I'd put that right there, so you know which one you're looking through. Um, the hard part for this was that. When you are. Some of the, some of them are all put together, do you know what I mean, so like this one was a student learning goal, two student learning goals and a district improvement goal.
So you'd, yeah, so you'd only evaluate the ones where she, her goals were relevant to them.
But it's not like you're, you're, this is like all for goal number one, and this one's all for goal number two, they're all kinda mixed in. And then you can go back and say, okay, what did I do for the green ones, okay, I did proficient, proficient. Um, let's see, if there's any more green ones. So let me see what green was, green was student learning principal walkthroughs. Student. Principal walkthroughs, so then you would know. I looked at all the green ones, she, I marked her proficient for those, or him.
Oh, cuz she, she color coded the goals?
No, she didn't, but these are Jeff's goals.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
So. Yeah, so, so what Susan did is she went through and highlighted, like, so for goal number, this is goal number three, I probably put it together. All of those, I have to go through here and find them and highlight, I have to decide what color goal number three is gonna be, is gonna be, you know, green, whatever, I go through and I highlight all those. Um, and then you go through and you. You check them off and.
Yeah, I think keeping that bolded would probably be sufficient, cuz it looks.
And then if you look like.
Because, yeah, when the colors come up, the gray disappears.
Yeah, the gray disappears, and I just felt like it was kind of, it was leading, like this is leading enough, do you know what I mean, versus. The, just the gray, cuz that was Mike's argument, Mike was like, it's telling me that I need to do that, and it's, it feels like it's leading me, and now I feel like it. Whereas this is like, this is what we're aiming for, but look, you can do it anywhere, cuz then you feel like if you put an X, it's, it's psychological. So in my mind, I was thinking like even this was, this was in a, if you look at Megan's. I changed that one, cuz look at, it was. Yeah, it was bold, it was a different color, I just made it the same, and I think I, I think I changed the color, I think I put it back to. Yeah, I mean, do you think it should be like that instead, or do you think?
I think as long as there's some.
Because it's our job to tell them, like when we go through and we do training or we talk about it, to say. The goal is proficient, and this, there's a, um, there's a webinar that we have online that MASC did, that Dorothy did. And it's basically the same thing, I watched it, it's the same thing that they came in and did for us, they came in, she came in and she helped us, we did a flow chart, we, we. She fished for different information, and then she basically put it all together with. What do you, like, what do you think the evaluation is used for, what is, what is your job, she kinda did a dipstick on where our knowledge was with it, and then she did the presentation. So the presentation is there and it talks about how you really, you're aiming for proficient, it gives you all of that information. So that's what Megan was saying, is that we, instead of having MASC come and speak to us, it might be a good idea to say. Either to say, that night you can come in and we can watch the webinar together, or you can watch the webinar on your own time. And, you know, if you have questions, that would be what we talk about at the next meeting, um, something along those lines. Rather than taking up everybody's time, uh, where it's, we're heading right into budget season, so I don't know if you. Would you mind?
I can watch the webinar.
Yeah, and then tell me if you, yeah, tell, cuz that's what I need, I need to know, do you feel like you are, yeah, because what I'm gonna do is. She didn't train us on how to fill this out, I'm going to explain once I have everything in here. Put the goals here, put this here, now let's see, let's look for goal number one, what is the color of it? Here's how, you know, you go through and how you fill it out and, uh, in a much more detailed, organized way, um, that I'm doing right now. But that way they understand because it's just, once you see how it all fits together, it makes sense, that's why. So I went through basically and just took out all of Megan's checkmarks and all of the colors, I'm gonna go back and put the right colors in. And then put in what goals they stand for, and then what I might do is I might. Do a modified version of this where I color coded as well, so input that inside of the binder for everyone, so that, for me, I like paper. Right, I write all over, and I'm like, oh, I can see the difference here versus I'm like.
Or at least this, or at least her goals with the evidence. It's hard, but cuz her evidence is gonna be electronic though, it's in the folder.
Right, right, so I mean, that's the other thing I can do too, is I could always ask people, does anybody, you know, want it printed out, we can always, I can always have. A packet printed out for them, um, or they can print it out at home or however they want, but it's. If, even if I take this and I, I highlight the colors on it, just so that people know this is what we're doing. Her last one might be the best one to do that on, like, I might, I'll do it on this one when I, I think in February or January is when I present all of this. Uh, or we present it. And that's when we would go through and say, okay, look at page one, you know, put this, you're actually gonna, you know, fill this part out, you're gonna skip this whole first page. Cuz you can't fill this out until you're done, so now you're gonna, you're gonna skip, this is actually the end, it's like the end should, really should just be at the end. And then you go through and you start.
I mean, maybe put it at the end, and then putting a cover sheet, say, you know, the first part. Will be, you know, color coded for her goals and which questions, and then. You know, you'll do individual, and then the final summary evaluations at the end.
I like that.
Rather than saying skip page one and two.
Yeah, it really is, um, intro, explanation, so what I will do is for our next.
And that's where you can say proficient is the norm, so that is what we expect, so if, if the superintendent goes above and beyond, that's exemplary. If they don't meet that, then that's where unsatisfactory needs improvement comes in.
And I think that there is a great explanation for this, inside, um, there's a, a PDF that. MASC has about superintendent evaluation, so I think I'm gonna, and I'll even cite that it's from MASC, so people know where it came from. But maybe for our next meeting, what I can have is I can have this all put together, I'll do the new packet, and then I'll. We can look at it and you can decide, do you feel like that works better, we can go through it together, does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah, yeah, where's the, um, is the webinar in love?
Yes, I'll send it to you, I did put it in, let me just double check, I think I'm pretty sure. This is December twenty three, yeah, so.
Now it's December. There was nothing in the folder.
Where'd it go, isn't it, I've done that. So been there. Oh, here it is, so when you go into, do you want me to share this again with you, this is the superintendent evaluation, so when you go into December twenty three. And you go, so there's a self evaluation survey, the superintendent's, and then we have the agenda, and then this is a superintendent evaluation link. So it should just take you, let's see, let's make sure it does. Let's test it out. Yeah, so there's Dorothy. Yeah.
How many minutes? Oh, this is maybe acceptable.
So it's an hour, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that could be done remotely.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because it, it's really, I mean, it's quite helpful, I wanna go through it again and just see if there's any things that. Like as you're watching, if you, if there's things that stick out, if you have questions, or if you feel that there are things that we need to say, because we can both present this.
Well, we can email her and clarify it, and then add it on, like watch this video, and then there is additional pieces.
Yes, exactly. So, and I think I actually, I believe I attended this one, um, because it's, in superintendent evaluation, it's always helpful, just to. It's one of the, it's a big, it's a big deal, so, but yeah, the way you get to it is, it's right inside.
And that's in December?
And that's in December, yeah, December twenty three, so actually, let me just. I'm gonna share it with you, I'll also share the whole folder. So I'm gonna send you that, a message, I apologize. And then I'm gonna go back.
So I feel like her evidence was, like, when I was clicking it, maybe it's in November, or maybe it's above.
And you're an editor, choose, you can add in, so do you think it was in?
I originally clicked into December, so I don't.
No, wait, that can't be right, were you, were you in December?
I don't know, no, let's see, I'll have to go back and click and see, I remember seeing like superintendent evidence.
She might have put it in this one, and I might have missed it, let's see, workshop, business items. I'm impressed that you found it. So I went, it must have been, maybe it's December. Yes, I don't know where it is, uh, or is it in here, maybe it's in here, con- conflict of interest, agendas, meeting minutes.
No.
No, no higher.
Maybe agendas? Well, we'll have to ask her, cuz maybe we, she could put a, or maybe link it into our folder too.
Yeah, that's what it would be great, is if she could link it in here.
Is there a way to have two folders exist, like that are the same, just two different places?
Yes. Yes. Or they, she can create, sometimes what I've done is, I've either moved the folder completely. Or I've copied every document and just made a new folder and put it in there, depends on how tech savvy I'm feeling that day.
Although it's a living document, cuz she's adding to it, so.
Right, that's true. But we want it somewhere that everybody can access it.
Yeah, or maybe just have a document with a link to her folder, but just it be in.
I almost wonder if my folder, if our, well, since then, the other ones would be in here too, I wonder if, um, the subcommittee folder should be in here. Because it has all of our stuff, and I mean, I don't know that people necessarily want it.
Although, this is twenty twenty three though, and it's like the school year, so would it be one step back? Like what, what is one step back from that? Oh, yeah, oh, subcommittees. So it is one step back.
I think these are old though. Yeah, those are really old.
Utilize them.
Let's see, election subcommittee.
Because where do they exist now, cuz they should be accessible by everyone.
They're in, yeah, and policy subcommittee, I started. Keep cod trip, I don't even know why that's in there, that must be my budget presentation. Yeah, so these must, I don't know why I put these, where's this budget presentation, this is old, this, this here? No, so that must be what they put in the school committee one. So. Yeah, so this folder is the school committee folder.
So it should have subcommittees there.
And then I think I added folders in myself.
So I mean, maybe within the subcommittees, we can say school year twenty three, twenty four.
Yeah.
In that way to separate them out from years.
That's a good idea. Cuz that, I think this is actually my folder. But I think that there should be a subcommittee tab. With the different ones.
Cuz I guess, well, I guess it's for each, it's under the agenda or like the day of the meeting, but.
But it's easier to.
Long term likes, you know, this and our own evaluation.
Oh, yeah, to be able to go back and say, hey, you know, I wanna go back, cuz right now what I do is I go into the drive and I start searching for different things, and it. It's easier when it's, that's, when I, and then, then I, it's like I'm netting everything, I'm putting it into the new. But if we had that and people didn't have to go and do that themselves, it's just easier, so I'll talk to Nicole about that, that's good.
And then, so, and then, then we can maybe create a document within like the superintendent evaluation that links us to her evidence.
Yes, that's what I want, I want, yeah, I want that in there, yeah, absolutely, um, and then, evidence.
Like one's hyperlink or whatever.
Perfect. Alright, so I will. Watch that. And then I need to color code. Oh, and the rubber. Okay, so review, we did, we just looked at this, um, and we, we couldn't evaluate it for accuracy. Because I haven't added in her goals yet, but I just set it back to regular. And then next time, what we'll do is. We'll go through and we'll, we'll check together just to make sure that I, I did the colors. We'll go through and we'll, we'll check together, just to make sure that I, I did the colors right and everything matches, I'm also gonna do the rubric as well. Um, the rubric is this one right here. Yeah. So, like, for, for Jeff's, what we did is, we printed it on the blue paper. Um, but I probably, I'm not sure I would do, I'm sure I'd do colored paper, and I went through and I highlighted whatever his goals were. For everyone, just so that they would know, um, and you could just look it up.
The standards.
Yeah, the standard, so like, where's the, where's Megan? So when you are.
So maybe if you print it on white paper and then color-code it.
I, that's a great idea, I agree, much easier, then, yeah, I would just translate, so like.
No, you don't.
No, no. No. Thank you. So like, let's see, oh, this is one. Let's go back to. So IE, IE, so as you're, as you're trying to figure out, uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, school assessment. You could actually go through and see what, like, uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment, but then it goes on. Regularly monitors and shares progress with the community, supports principals to align, and then it tells you what exemplary is, because. There were times when I was like, oh, he's definitely exemplary, but then when I read this, I was like, oh, I guess that was proficient, it, this rubric is so helpful. So that's a good idea, I'm gonna change, write that down, so rubric. White paper and color-code, that's gonna make it a lot easier, a lot easier, I just love the continuity, that's a great idea, just, I like that.
And even next year, like, when Carol does her, her goal, she's clearly looking at this, and so we could even. Start off with her color-coding.
Yes, absolutely, that's a great idea. Yep, yeah, and then, then it would just be done at the very beginning of the year.
Like each standard is a different color, and then.
Well, because normally, that's what I think we did, um, but I hadn't done this for two years, so it was like. Oh, I think we did superintendent, like, later on, and then I was like, oh, no, 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 we started earlier, but you're right, that's a really great idea. Uh, get it done right at the beginning, and then everybody, the thing about next year too, um, I know we have. Think. There's. So we have, what do we have, I'm thinking, do we have three elections in November, there's Megan's seat, Julie's seat. And Lisa's seat. They were two-year positions, so that we have the potential of having to train. Three, depending on whether they wanna run again, even if they win, three new people on superintendent evaluation. Um, after November.
For next year's evaluation.
For next year's evaluation, yeah, and I remember the year that, um, Mike came on. What we did is we put asterisks, I think, next to his, and I think we had said, like, has only half year. Like, half of a year of, um, being on the commit, so it was, it was half of a, and so we can decide whether we feel like. They still have an accurate picture, yeah, November's still pretty early, he came on in January, I think that's why. And then you do the evaluation at the beginning of May, and so there wasn't much time for him to, so his perceptions were really off, off from the rest of ours, because. He hadn't been there from the beginning, yeah, yeah, exactly, so, but yeah, November's pretty early on, okay, do you want to do? So I know November, I mean, December is really busy, um. Do you want to meet at the beginning of January, do you wanna meet in December, what works best for you, Jess?
Uh, my phone is videotaping right now.
Yeah.
So.
So, you know, you know what, why don't we, um, text back and forth about a date, and then I'll just, I'll let people know, um, so.
Oh, I like you have the privacy thing on.
Oh, isn't that great?
That's amazing, I was like, do I have my sunglasses on? No. I know I just put patients on Thursday, the twenty-second, cuz I had to move them for my dad's procedure, so.
Oh, yeah.
Um. So that's that day with our meeting. So that one day, I was hoping to maybe be up there as needed, so, I mean, maybe the sixteenth.
The sixteenth is a Saturday, the fifteenth, I'm going to pick up Rebecca at.
I'm sorry, Thursday, sorry.
Oh, Thursday, the fourteenth?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so the fourteenth, the fourteenth, that sounds good, so why don't you look at your schedule?
Or not the fourteenth, I'm sorry, the, so fifteenth, you're leaving?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just going up to Vermont to pick her up, but it's eight hours, four hours up, four hours back, yeah, it's fun day.
Um. What did, what did you wanna achieve of that meeting?
So the only thing that we're gonna do, and that's why we can push to January if you want, is just, we're gonna go over this, and this. And just make sure that they're all lined up, like, the colors all match, and everything is organized, and you're gonna look at the, I'm gonna have the new with this at the end. And then a cover sheet, and we're just gonna look at, we can really just wait till January.
Okay, cuz, well, cuz I, I can watch the training, and then come up with any questions we need to clarify with either you or with her. Yeah.
Um. But that, I don't know, doesn't necessarily, cuz, cuz then, once our first meeting in January, the twelfth, right? Or we, or we were gonna have a training on the twenty-third, right, so.
Yes.
It would have to just be before that training that we might not have them come to, and then it would just be like an independent thing before the next meeting. When is it, January?
January ninth.
So it'd have to be like the.
So.
Fifth or something.
Yeah, our meeting is the fifth. And that's it, wow.
Really, we don't have? No, the twelfth.
Oh, the twelfth, yeah. That's why, oh, cuz my, I hit something on here, and everything turned green, and now I'm turning everything back to, like, I'm red, Teddy's blue, Rebecca's purple, like, that's, those are, the family is green. Uh, and then there's like holidays, and so, um. So what do you?
So, so I mean, if we put it off to January, would be the Thursday, the fifth, or, no.
Yeah, so, yeah, do you wanna do the fourth?
Yeah, and then that way would, we would still be able to have it ready for the ninth, and then, and the report, we could say. This hour-long training needs to be reviewed before. Like, in, in lieu of the twenty-third, January twenty-third training, this is an online thing that you need to do. Before the meeting. Cuz it would be February something, right?
Yes, yeah, it would be February, I think it was like the twenty-third or twenty-seventh, or, uh, in lieu of January twenty-third meeting.
So, yeah, so I'll, I'll try to do this sooner rather than later, so we can.
I'm gonna try to do this too, sooner rather than later, that way I have it done, and it's fresh in my mind.
Exactly.
Um, so, anything else?
Um, just getting my notes from before. I think when, um. The things that we mentioned, like, to address some of the goals that we are, maybe not addressing, but I don't know, maybe put that in. The document, like, so when we say, or, wait, no, our self.
Oh, our self eval.
Our self eval, um, like, maybe just have a page of like.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
These are areas that we felt that maybe we could improve, maybe you could include that in the report.
Self eval, yes, yeah, that's a, actually, that's a good idea.
Yeah, so like, please look over the goals, and if something comes to mind.
Yeah.
You know, please see, maybe under your agenda, and we could, you know, put the bullet points of like. Areas of improvement within our goals, you know, um.
Yeah.
So maybe, I guess, so, yeah, so they would be in our agenda. Right, so you would, it would be our minutes, I guess, not our agenda, but you would have these in our minutes, so in your thing, like, please review. The minutes.
Yep.
And it includes some areas of improvement, so please read the goals to see.
I think what I'm gonna do is, and, yeah, so, last time I did a report, um, I'll, I'm gonna do the minutes, and I'll, I'll link all this stuff in the minutes too. But when I, I'll do, I do, did a mini-report last time, just to kinda organize my thoughts and everything, and I'll also link. The self-eval, but I'm gonna try to do, I like the idea of doing some sort of condensed version of, these are the areas, and this is specifically, like, even if it's just one line from. You know, so they get an idea of what it is, cuz if you say, if I just did this, they'd be like, okay, operations, I'm thinking of that game. Um, but if there's like one line for the, like, little, seven little bullets underneath there that says, you know, um. You know, operating protocols are followed, you know, things like that, that they're keeping in mind.
So like, this was like a survey, right, so possibly, like, the budget. Could send out a survey, like, what priorities the parents feel they need to work on.
Oh, priorities, that's a good word.
And that would be a survey, and that's for like reaching out.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I have all those other pieces, we have to ask about the ethics, cuz it might be under ethics.
Yeah, I, I think I'm just gonna redo it, so, cuz I can't find it.
I, same, I can't find mine either, and we both did it, but I don't know where it is.
Yeah.
It's lost in the computer somewhere.
Yep, black hole of the cloud.
So true, alright, okay, well, then I would like to, um, adjourn this meeting at eleven eighteen.
Second, so moved.
So moved, I love it. It's official, hi.